Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the city of Bettendorf. Tonight is our city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 15th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I trust you all had a wonderful Valentine's Day. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Saxer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
Thank you all for coming. Now, if you'd all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. This will be followed by an invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Pastor of Hope Baptist Church, Pastor Mark Cannon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Mark, please. Please stay standing. Bow your heads with me if you would, please.
Father in heaven, we thank you for the blessings that you have given to this city. We thank you for this body of governors who have given their time and their ability to lead and to guide this city. Thank you for giving them strength, wisdom, and health. I pray now, Father, as we commence with this meeting, that you would guide and that you would continue to give that wisdom. I pray that we would seek that which is best for the whole of the city, and I pray that you would make that clear to those that are making these decisions. Give them guidance in these matters. And we thank you again for the providence you've given us and giving us this city and being part of it. And we pray these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mark. Pleasure to see you, my friend. All right. We have a proclamation today. This is a proclamation for Quad City Engineering and Science Council's 60th Anniversary Celebration Day on February 24th, 2022. And accepting this proclamation today is Dan D. Alessandro, the Professional Development Coordinator for the Quad City Engineering and Science Council, and Pat Barnes. Both of these men have volunteered countless hours to teach young people in our community science, technology, engineering, and math. And I'm going to deliver the proclamation here from the dice in the center of the room. Please join me, gentlemen.
Thank you for being here. Always a pleasure.
Thank you for all the work you do with our young people in the community.
This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the Quad City Engineering and Science Council is a regional nonprofit, all volunteer organization whose mission is to promote the pursuits of careers in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, or STEM. And whereas the Quad City Engineering and Science Council has many events throughout the year in our region to motivate students to use their minds and hands to explore technological challenges and for adults to grow in their technical fields of expertise and to be role models for our students. And whereas the Quad City Engineering and Science Council is established in 1962, is composed of men and women who volunteer their time and talent to encourage and to promote STEM to students and adults to the betterment of productive careers and capable workforces. And whereas the Quad City Engineering and Science Council is celebrating its 60th year of promoting STEM in the region during Engineers Week, February 20th through the 26th, 2022. Now, therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, in recognition of this important event sponsored by the Quad City Engineering and Science Council, do hereby proclaim February 25th, 2022, as Quad City Engineering and Science Council's 60th Anniversary Celebration Day.
Here.
Here.
Congratulations, gentlemen. 60 years, all your hard work.
Please, you have the floor if you'd like to make a few comments.
Just a very quick set of comments. One is for your awareness that Bettendorf is our home base for the QCSC. And you may be aware, or you've probably seen, that every year there's an event over at the Middle Park Lagoon called Cardboard Bogat Regatta. That is actually hosted by us in some collaboration with Bettendorf High School and some of the other schools in the area. So for allowing us to use that facility, we thank you and we very appreciate your generosity. Thank you, everybody, for the proclamation, and I invite you all to be a part of our STEM celebration on February 24th over at East Mill Lane at the Baden. Thank you.
See you there. Before you leave, we'll see you there.
So one of you guys in the middle?
Thanks, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. We'll see you on the 24th.
Mike's standing next to me. We didn't get the... I'm on the pictures. We'll figure it out.
Okay, we've come to public requests of council. If anybody here would like to be heard on an item not scheduled tonight for a public hearing, because you'd have your opportunity to be heard then, we'd like to hear from you. Please state your name and your address when you address council with your public request of council. Let's open that up for somebody to approach the podium in the back. State your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you.
Hi, I'm Sharon Thirkoff, and I live at 2690 Heather Glenn Avenue. And I'm here to talk about the Life Fitness Center. City government provides essential services such as water, sewer, police, fire, streets, and garbage. Additional services such as the library, the family museum, the golf course, the Life Fitness Center, and parks are also offered by the city of Bettendorf. Few, if any, of the above break even or turn a profit. Like many cities, Bettendorf has three major population sectors: kids that go to school, adults that go to work, and retired seniors, a few that are here with me tonight. Excuse me. None or less are more important than the other. In these times of growing obesity, and in this part of the country where winter keeps people indoors, there's the Life Fitness Center, the LFC, year-round, serving all three population sectors stated above. We agree that there are other local gyms, but none of them offer the wide variety that the centrally-located LFC does. The Life Fitness Center, used by members, private groups, and the Bettendorf Park and Rec, provides basketball, badminton, volleyball, soccer, baseball now, tennis, and our favorite, pickleball. They all provide mental stimulation, exercise, and social interaction. In addition, the Life Fitness Center also provides the area's largest indoor track for daily walking and running for young and old all year long. With pickleball, all ages, all genders can play 12 months a year. It's a great exercise, socially engaging, and totally diverse. Our organization, called Friday Fun Day, has benefited the Life Fitness Center and its membership with donated equipment, approximately $15,000 worth, organized tournaments, holiday activities, league play, all at no cost to the city or its taxpayers. We know that a new outdoor pool is on your list of wants. Realistically, it's for the youth sector for roughly three months a year, and we understand that. All we ask is that you also consider supporting a location that covers all three population sectors 12 months a year, a facility that offers exercise and social interaction so critical to all of the Bettendorf population groups. Thanks.
Thank you, Sharon. Very nice to see you. I know you've got several folks here in support of your comments, so thank you all for being here. Is there anybody else here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing? If so, please approach the podium in the back. We'd like to hear from you. Okay. Let's close public requests of council. We'll move to our first public hearing. This is with regard to the proposed amendment to the I-80 Urban Renewal Plan for urban renewal area in the city of Bettendorf. We went through this at length yesterday at our committee, the whole meeting. Are there any comments from Mr. Ryder, Mr. Shatt, before we open this public hearing? We all understand the parameters of everything from last night. Fantastic. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing. This is with regard to the proposed amendment to the urban renewal area. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Okay, let's close the public hearing. Let's move to a resolution for Councilmember Webster to present.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution determining an area of the city to be economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, and combination thereof of such an area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens or residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment 1 to the I-80 Urban Renewal Plan. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Okay, seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Saxer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously passed the amendment to the urban renewal plan in the urban renewal area at I-80 and Middle Road Corridor. The next item on tonight's agenda is also a public hearing. This is with regard to the approval of a development agreement between the city of Bettendorf and two entities, one being Middle and Forest Grove LLC and the other being FG80 Holdings LLC. Mr. Ryder had an opportunity, along with Mr. Shatt, last night to bring us up to speed on all the particulars of the agreement, and we had an opportunity to review the same. Mr. Curran provided his legal expertise thereabout. And Mr. Ryder, would you have any comments tonight?
No, Your Honor, I think the development speaks for itself. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have published notice of the...
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
We received one item from Mr. ...
Ed Blackman?
Augman.
Okay.
Your Honor, we have placed this email at your spots, and we would request that you take a motion to accept it into the record as read.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have to do that by a roll call vote to put it in the record? I didn't think so. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
And, Your Honor, if I could just address two things in this letter or email that I think are kind of factually pretty misleading. In the email, Mr. Blackman states that the city will spend $10.9 million to earn $3.5 million. And in fact, we presented last night that the city will spend $10.9 million to receive $14.4 million, and it's a net to us of $3.5 million over the 20-year period. And as we said last night, that does not include the sales tax rebate award, and if that were to take place, we would receive 45% of that rebate. In the first development, that rebate was $2.5 million from the state. It's a sales tax rebate, and we received $500,000 of that. Under this arrangement, we would receive $1.1 million, and none of that is projected into the pro formas that we put in front of you. And as we said last night, all the sales tax numbers, all of the hotel motel tax numbers, and the hotel motel tax fee that we incorporated into the pro forma were all based on 50% of occupancies of the hotel and based on a very conservative estimate based on current sales taxes that are generated at the site that we can quantify. There are a number of ways we can't quantify, but suffice it to say, $3.5 million is the minimum that we would earn over and above our expenses during this period of time, and we think it's probably closer to $5 or $6 million at the end of the day. So we do believe this is a great project. And different from Mr. Blackman's statement, where he thought we're spending 100% of the taxpayers' money, existing taxpayers on the road, the road is being paid for 80% with surface transportation funds from the federal government and 20% funds from the city. And we're also receiving a RISE grant. I want to say that's for $2.7 million, if I remember my numbers right. So that is part of the long-term planning that we put in place probably 20 years ago for this road and paid for with surface transportation funds and not with general fund tax dollars, which is a big distinction, I think. So I just wanted to answer those questions before we walk into the development agreement, Your Honor.
Understood. It's a complex deal, and it's hard to understand at times, but you've done a really nice job, both of you, Jason and Jeff and the team, in bringing us all up to speed so we understand it. Chris, so thank you very much. Michelle, did I ask you? We did. I did ask you about the published notice, and then we got into the... Yeah, so we did get correspondence. We've now put that as part of the record. Let's open the public hearing with regard to the development agreement among and by the city of Bettendorf, Middle Road, and Forest Grove LLC and FG80 Holdings LLC. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Please approach the podium, state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Harrell, 5758 California Drive, proud Bettendorf resident, Your Honor, members of council. As you know, my day job is president and CEO of Visit Quad Cities. I also oversee our Quad Cities Sports Commission. And I just wanted to share with you tonight, just for a few minutes, what this asset has meant to our regional destination, because sometimes I think it gets missed in the context of what we're trying to accomplish at the national level. But before I do that, I do want to say thank you to Doug Kratz, Kevin Kellner, Dave Stowe, everyone involved with this asset, with this project, but also want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Plain, Mr. Ryder, because I think this just demonstrates if you have vision and if you have a strategy and you are investing from a public sector perspective and also on the private side for people taking significant risk to try to add value to our community, it can pay dividends. So in our analysis, the TBK Sports Complex continues to create a significant amount of value for our regional destination. I think in three short years, what that asset has accomplished has been phenomenal. I think we are now in a space where we are getting national notoriety. Some of the numbers that we analyze through our business intelligence will show that in 2021, the asset yielded literally more than 1.4 million people that were literally consuming that asset on an annualized basis. And the trajectory of where we're going to see that asset is only moving north. As you know, sports tourism and youth sports is a highly competitive space, and it's an arms race, and I think there's not a community around the U.S. that isn't looking at ways that they can double down and invest in assets like this to try to drive tourism product, to try to create demand, to do the things that everybody wants to achieve in quality of place and quality of life and also economic development. Make no secret, this is an economic development engine that benefits not only Bettendorf but the entire region. Not only that, I think the brand recognition and how we are using it every day to further our story is definitively a positive one and something that we feel very strongly we will continue to take advantage of moving forward. Sports tourism is like Teflon. Obviously, the last two years in our space has not been fun enduring a global pandemic, but the one silver lining really has been sports and has been youth sports. And quite frankly, without it and without that asset, I don't think we would be as positioned as well as we are to be positioned to move out of the pandemic as we recover through the things that we're trying to recover and from an economic perspective. If you look at the overall economic impact of TBK Sports Complex, it's about a $25 million annualized positive value to our community. There are not a lot of demand generators in our region that are driving that. So I would just applaud the city. I would applaud the private developers for making this happen, because the activation, the programming, not only from a sports tourism perspective, but how locals are consuming this asset on a daily basis is doing something that, quite frankly, not a lot of communities can boast. I will tell you, over the next several years, you're going to see the advent of more and more communities investing in capital projects to round out their sports tourism assets, and it is a hypercompetitive place that, quite frankly, I think we need to travel in. We need to travel in that space because it produces results and it is a definitive ROI. So from our perspective, I will tell you, from our strategy standpoint, and the mayor knows this, he serves in our board, and how we are long-ranging the Quad Cities and where we want to be, sports tourism is going to be central to what we do from a tourism perspective. So I would just urge everyone in this room, as well as all of our regional counterparts, to look at TBK Sports Complex as a model for how we're driving economic growth, how we're recovering through the pandemic, how we're positioning the marketplace to do the things that we want to achieve. I've lived here three years, and I live five minutes from the asset, and I'm probably up there four or five times a day or a week. It just depends on the weekend, and I will tell you, I'm so grateful for Doug's investment and what the city has done to put us in a position to do more. So I think over the last three years, we've been able to accomplish some great things, but I also feel like in the next five to 10, we're going to do even more. We are incredibly excited about this opportunity, this development, and what it means for the city of Bettendorf and our regional destination is something that I think is going to pay dividends, and we're just grateful for the fact that we've got a body that's willing to take this vision and turn it into a reality in a team-based kind of format. I also want to applaud Dave Stowe. We have spent a lot of time during Dave's short time in the Quad Cities, and I think we've got the right executive leading the way. And the partnership that Visit Quad Cities has with Dave and his team, as well as Doug, is something that we truly value, and we value all of you and are so grateful for how you invest in tourism and the fact that you prioritize it and that you're prioritizing this asset. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Would you call this game changer, Part Two? Some idiot mayor called this a game changer in 2017. I don't know if it feels like that to you. I'm just looking for a little verification.
I do think it's a game changer, and it will continue to be a game changer.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on the development agreement? Okay, let's close the public hearing on the development agreement. Let's move to the resolution. Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution approving a development agreement among the city of Bettendorf, Middle and Forest Grove LLC and FG80 Holdings LLC for the development of a regional sports development, golf entertainment facility, and commercial corridor within the I-80 Urban Renewal Plan area in the city of Bettendorf, state of Iowa. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Yes. Councilmember Saxer.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the question that I brought up last night, and we deferred to tonight, and that is, the development agreement talks about creating 180 jobs at the facility, but as we know, most of those jobs are service jobs, relatively low-paying jobs. My question is, this is the second development we've had out there. Do we have any evidence from the first development, and do we have any projection from this development that the Chamber of Commerce has been able to use this to attract young professionals and other businesses to town? You know, is there an insurance company or a bank or something out there that's looking to locate a facility someplace in the Midwest? And one of the things they look at is amenities for their employees, for their young professionals. And so my question is, is this facility going to help that?
Well, I don't see that Paul Romler's from the Chamber is here, and we didn't invite him to be here to answer the question, I can tell you that, or he would have been. Based on my experience at Visit Quad Cities, these are the types of amenities young people are looking for and companies do look for. Based upon our discussion today with the Chamber of Commerce at 1:00 and the things that they're looking for, they tout this as one of those special amenities that does attract people, but I cannot point you to hard data that in the pandemic, a couple of years it's been open, that we have an insurance company or a bank that was looking to locate in the Midwest and came here because of this. I do believe, anecdotally, when there are site selectors who seek a spot like this, and they can find a same or similar site in multiple places, for instance, in the Midwest, to piggyback on the question, when they visit, this is the kind of thing we show them, and this is the kind of thing that we watch their eyes light up and we're happy to see is exciting to them. I can't give you for sure that that helped locate something, for instance, a large warehouse in Davenport, but they saw it when they came, and they do care about the folks who they locate to this area or they hire in this area and hope that they have a rewarding quality of life. I think this is an amenity that adds to that. Deckard, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
I would add two things, Your Honor. First off, we know anybody who goes out there on the weekend and just looks at the cars and looks at the license plates on the cars can see that that place is packed with people who don't live here. I don't know that we can point other than Dave Stowe, who's moved here, that anybody has exactly moved here, but I would say this: We did not have the attention of the Iowa DOT on the radar of the I-80 interchange for the last 10 years, when we had gotten a federal grant for $500,000 to do the preliminary engineering for the DOT. This summer, they came and said, and we showed them the potential plan that we were negotiating, we're likely going to be in the five-year plan this year. They also invited us to apply for a RISE grant for $2.7 million to enhance the transportation plan for Forest Grove and Middle and Middle and Forest Grove, the whole set of intersections, and have shown their delight to us in the acceptance of the roundabouts. The EDA grant with federal government, we've gotten really good indications that they're going to give us the grant for the $2.7 million. In my experience, having been around all these entities and all these grants, this is the one machine that's making all of that move. That needle is moving radically, and it is this, it is everything that's happening, the traffic counts, the sales tax numbers, the hotel motel tax numbers, they're all significant. And so can we say somebody moved here exactly for that? Probably the people that Doug employed, but I don't, you know... But I'll guarantee you, everybody else wants this. Des Moines is trying to emulate it. We're about an hour and a half in front of them, literally, on this issue. So we're excited about this, and I think unless Jeff wants to preempt me, I'm not sure we can cite exactly somebody moving here for it.
Well, I would never preempt you, sir, but...
You've done a hell of a job.
I would suggest a couple of items of note to maybe help answer Jerry's question, excuse me, Councilmember Saxer's question. First off, to your point, Mr. Stowe moved here from California for this wonderful development. Thank you very much. But more in fact and true to the area, Trillium and Enterprise Holdings both set up corporate white-collar business sector jobs out there, spending nearly $10 million on their new facilities. Enterprise Holdings trains people out there at that facility. They stay in the Cambria Hotel on weeknights to provide training. So both of those places built in this corridor because of what it had done. The question may arise then, well, what happened with their buildings behind that? Both of them have been backfilled in the Quad Cities with new white-collar businesses that are now backfilling those spaces as well. So I think it's worth noting in that regard, and then additionally, there's another business that's under construction here this spring that Mr. Kellner has brought in that's going to be constructing, for lack of a better term, straps for semi-trucks and trailers. It's a light manufacturing type of use, but also a showroom for their products, and that'll be due west of the Quickstar, right there on the site as well. So there are actually full-time jobs that have been generated because of this whole driver, this economic engine, if you will. But to Mayor Gallagher's point as well, I can't tell you factually how many jobs have been created, other than there has been investment in that white-collar sector.
You know, the other thing that Dave Harrell has taught me after we got him here by way of Jacksonville after being in Nashville, is that if we don't introduce people to the area, they're not going to know our culture and people. They're not going to fall in love with the Quad Cities the way we have. We desperately need people to fill a plethora of open jobs, and we believe that once we get folks here to the area, they will enjoy the area, our quality of life, and if there are positions that become available now, might consider those positions when they would not have but for the visit, and this is that generator for the visit.
I was just going to share a story, Jerry. I was selling a car, and a guy came and looked at it, and I think he had a son, I want to But the dad traveled to TBK from Des Moines for practice, his son, and fell in love with the area. He worked out of his home and he literally moved to Bettendorf, loved the schools, loved the area. So he relocated here, he worked out of his house. So that was really cool and he bought the car.
So thank you. That was the answer I was looking for. I think that was important to put in the record.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Saxer. Any other discussion on this item? Looking to my left.
No.
Okay. Back to the right, yes. We'll go with Councilmember Webster and then Councilmember Norman, please.
Just to clarify some other, and I know we had a presentation last night, but for tonight, it's in this letter, but it's also been somewhat spread online about the schools not getting any money. Could we get an update on the exact amount?
I'm sure Jason has that exact amount right in front of him.
That actually goes to the schools, it's not pennies.
Presentation two, slide seven. Go back over the current amount they receive, Jason, and then the amount they're going to receive by virtue of this.
Right, so today you have about 109 acres that's classified as ag land, which immediately reduces the taxable value of the property. So under the development, obviously, this will be changed to commercial, which will up the taxable value on day one. But as of today, on that ag land, PV Schools is collecting about $4,500 annually in property taxes. In year one of the development agreement, we would expect the school district to collect about $61,000 in taxes and that's through their debt levy, their PEPL levies and the instructional support levy that they get to keep in a TIF arrangement. At full buildout, that number reaches the $90,000 to $95,000 annually in property tax revenue to the school district. So you're talking about an increase of about $90,000 annually over what they are achieving today.
What's the total amount over the period of the development agreement?
Just shy of $2 million.
And there won't be any, there won't be any houses on this property
No kids.
that they have to have kids, that they have to build a school for.
Correct. I mean, that's part of the point. Along with that, they also still get sales tax money, correct?
They get the local option sales tax.
Their share, yeah.
Their share of local option.
They get their local option, so it's not like some particular places we're putting online that they get absolutely nothing in this deal. That's just what I want to clarify. I mean.
All of their sales tax will stay intact and they will get it as rated today.
Incorrect news spreads quickly. I mean, I think this goes down to the other thing that was said about the first agreement in comparison to the second agreement. Not all of this money, the sales tax dollars that comes in, is outside money, but a difference of money coming into the community, that sales tax multiplier means so much more. Because continually prior to having this stuff within the community, we were all leaving. People with kids were all leaving. There was no money coming in. We were spending sales tax dollars outside the state. That money's gone. It's hard to get that money back within the community. Sales tax dollars, when it comes in in the form of tourism, it has a multiplier that Dave could probably sit up there and talk to for about four hours explaining it to us. It's a completely different multiplier and that's the big game changer within this also. Game changer 2.0 is the sales tax dollars that are coming in. So that's very important, along with, you know, once people meet us, they stay here. I've built houses for people that have moved here from it. I've bid some that I didn't get, so I know that people have moved here. I couldn't tell you how many, but I know of at least two that have, one from Ames and one from completely out of state. Now that people are more working from home, I think you'll see a little bit more of it. At the same time, you know, when people meet you, they don't want to leave, which means that Dave is never going to leave the visitor's room.
Both Daves.
Both Daves. So, I mean, I think this is a great thing. I think it's, it is a game changer 2.0. Hopefully it continues. I mean, the agreement is still good for the city. We're still collecting taxes, we're still collecting debt levies to help pay for stuff. It's not a burden on the taxpayer in any way, shape or form. I think we're going to have great amenities, gain tourism, gain sales tax dollars, gain jobs, gain people. Not only here, but regionally, we're all always talking about regionally. I mean, people won't always necessarily say in Bettendorf, so I think it's a great thing. So.
To that point, think of the sales tax that gets divided prorata throughout our community and the hotel motel tax and the places where these folks are staying. If we're filling up five to six hotels a weekend, there's one there. So they're going to four or five others. Councilmember Norman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think a lot of this has been hashed and rehashed and I don't think we can thank Doug and his team enough. We're in the middle of a $115 million budget and we agonize over all of the dollars and the allocation of funds. And still, while we're trying to increase public safety and hire personnel, we're able to still look to presumably lower taxes. All the while, we're looking at our tremendous growth in this town. And we need not look much farther than that for sale sign that's still out there north of 80 that we have had for well over 20 years with no spark. So, but for this investment, and frankly, we talked about maybe the city someday would have maybe five, six, seven years ago been the taxpayers would have been on the hook and it would have been a city run facility. And I don't know if we've figured out, is this, Doug, if this is one in a million or what the odds are, but to have the fortune that we have to be able to partner with you and to be able to see this for our kids and our families, we've gone to ribbon cuttings out there and frankly said, you better look around because with the growth and the investment and the retail opportunities and the entrepreneurship in this town, we will not recognize it in a decade. And I'm just so grateful, I think our city feels that. And I do feel like with the nuts and bolts of the deal, that we are sincerely under promising with, and that's the way it ought to be structured, on the under promise with the fact that we'll probably be able to over deliver on this deal. But again, super grateful, thanks to everyone that had a hand in this and presumably we'll be able to pass this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Other comments? Not at all. Well, again, thank you very much for our partnership and for working with you, Kevin Kellner, Doug Kratz, Dave Stowe, Dave Harrell and the teams that you guys have, the rest of the folks who are coming in and putting in this new golf amenity, if we can make that happen. Very excited about all the things that you've done. A great way to get hundreds of thousands of people to our wonderful community. We are very pleased. Thank you to our staff, Mr. Schatt, Mr. Ryder, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Morlock, Mr. Curran, Mr. Plane, everybody else that was involved, we thank you very much. Michelle, please call the roll.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
We have unanimously passed a development agreement with City of Bettendorf and Middle at Forest Grove LLC and Forest Grove 80 or FG80 Holdings LLC. We move to our next public hearing. This is with regard to the issuance of not to exceed $7 million in general obligation urban renewal bonds for the city of Bettendorf. Did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this one?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing. This is with regard to the issuance of $7 million in bonds, general obligation bonds. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? We'll close that public hearing and move to the resolution for Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution instituting proceedings, or instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $7 million general obligation urban renewal bonds for essentially corporate urban renewal purposes. I move approval of this resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Had a presentation again last night by Jason Schatt, Jeff Ryder and the team. Okay. Michelle, please call the roll.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
All right, we have two resolutions in a row, both for Councilmember Baden. We'll start with number 12. This is with regard to $16,235,000 in general obligation bond series 2022A. Mr. Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution directing advertisement for sale of $16,235,000 general obligation bond series 2022A and approving the electronic bidding procedures and official statement. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? We talked about this a couple of times in CIP planning and budgeting, again last night. Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
We have unanimously passed those series bonds. If you would be so kind, Councilmember Baden, to help us with this $3 million and $95,000 general obligation bond series 2022B.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution directing advertisement for sale of $3 million, $95,000 taxable general obligation urban renewal bonds, series 2022B, and approve the electronic bidding procedures and official statement. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Sign on, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
All right, we have another public hearing. This is with regard to the amendments we talked about last night on the site license agreement for a piece of property, a tower we've got really, at 925 21st Street. After that presentation, does any council member have any questions or wish for Councilor Curran to explain it again? Feel good on that?
He's anxiously waiting to do it, Your Honor.
Well, such a good job last night, we don't have any questions. Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing. This is with regard to an amendment to the site license agreement between the city of Bettendorf and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for some changes to a tower located at 925 21st Street. Anybody here wish to be heard on the item? Let's close that, move to Councilmember Connors who can present our resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the fourth amendment to the site license agreement between the city of Bettendorf and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the cell tower located at 925 21st Street. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
Brian, let's talk about our intake repair program. We had a long committee, the whole meeting last night for other reasons, but give us the, this is our yearly program, we all pretty much understand it, but help us again.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you just stated, this is an annual program that we have that just removes and replaces existing storm sewer intakes in various locations around the city. We anticipate 41 intakes to be completed by the end of the year.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Brian from council before we open a public hearing? Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Do we receive any correspondence?
No, we didn't.
I wouldn't think we might. Let's open a public hearing with regard to our intake repair program. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? All right, let's close that public hearing. Councilmember Adamson, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the plan specifications in form of contract for the fiscal year 2022 intake repair program. I move approval of the resolution.
Second. Any discussion from council? 41 intakes to be repaired. We probably have at least 41 that need it. Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.
Saxer.
Aye.
Baden.
Aye.
You're off and running, Brian, please thank the staff and those with whom you contract. We have a new public hearing. This is with regard to the downtown master plan overlay district. Jeff, you want to tell us what we're talking about today, these prohibitive uses? They've been in our packet, we've looked at them, but just briefly, what's going on?
Your Honor, I could, but I will yield the floor to Mr. Hunt, who's done all of the heavy lifting on this.
Okay, thank you. Our community development director, Mark Hunt, I'm so used to just going to these two on tonight's meeting. I'm sorry, Mark, I didn't, please, didn't mean to slight you. You have the floor, sir.
Director Ryder, thanks, Your Honor. Just a reminder here, this is a update to our zoning ordinance related to the downtown master plan overlay district, in which we want to add a prohibited use. That prohibited use would be brick and mortar fireworks retail stores. So a store in which 50% of the volume of the store shelf was for fireworks or 50% of the total sales was for fireworks, those would not be allowed in our downtown master plan overlay district, roughly between 6th and 28th and a half street and Grant Street to the riverfront with a little bump out up to Brown Street in the middle. That's the geography, it'd be added prohibited use. There are other prohibited uses in the area, this would add that one. It would not affect pop up stands, tents, those type of things, just the brick and mortar stores.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for Mr. Hunt? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have affidavit of publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to this?
No, we did not.
Let's open the public hearing with regard to our new prohibited use in the downtown master plan overlay district. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on this item? Okay, let's close the public hearing and let's go to our first reading of this ordinance. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first reading of an ordinance amending section 11-6-3, parent G, parent 7 of the Bettendorf City Code Downtown Master Plan Overlay District, prohibited uses. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion? Something we talked about, a little bit ago? Sign on, Michelle, would you please call the roll on our first reading?
Webster.
Aye.
Adamson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Connors.
Aye.
Norman.
Aye.